So we'll go by that since Curtis is ready. If the truth is ready, so with that, we'll call our main quarters. First off, would you entertain any additions or deletions to the agenda? Or a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion approved. Any motions sparked? Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, thank you. Rule call. Are you completed?
All set.
Alright, here we go. Pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the October 8, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Support, any motions supported? Any comments, questions, additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? The motion is carried, thank you. Hearings, our first one, we are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the agenda will allow, to consider an amended application for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate from Avalon and Tahoe Manufacturing Incorporated for the south building expansion. Your pleasure.
Move to the public, carry. Support.
There's a motion and support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried and we have a hearing. Are you leading or?
Great, Gratchett.
Great, Gratchett.
Hello, everyone. So last time I was here was actually a little earlier this year in the spring. And we approved this expansion for Avalon initially. And then through the process, once the construction completion is done, I hope, with break on the cost, we send that into the state and to Kathy Roslin, the predecessor. And in doing that, we realized that there was a piece of a switchgear and power feed that they needed for electrical for the building. That was incorrectly viewed as equipment the first time, or listed as equipment. So we've since coordinated with Kathy to be sure that that is a part of the real property equipment. And because of that, it increased in an amount that was above what the state has a 10% threshold, that if it's within 10%, once the final cost comes, then you don't have to reapprove it. So this was actually a 16% increase. And the reason why was, A, because it was accidentally characterized as equipment instead of real property, but also they had to go much larger on the size to help with that building. So now the increase is in $217,000, bringing the total to 1.5. And then previously, it was 1.32 million. So Frank is all secure if you have any questions. But other than that, it's just what was presented to you earlier this year.
Casey, who has the first question? I don't hear very many. I think we're probably all very familiar with the project and our applicants, so... Are there any numbers of the public that would have comments on this? This topic in particular right now? Again, I don't see any. So we'll entertain a motion to close this hearing.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion support, last chance. Any comments? All those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried and the hearing is closed. Next, we are to consider a resolution authorizing PA 198 amended industrial facilities exemption certificate for Avalon and Tahoe Manufacturing Incorporated's south building expansion. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt. Support.
We have a motion to support. Any more comments or questions? We didn't have many the first time. Can't go saving your chance. Okay, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried and it's passed, so we've adapted that. Okay, thank you very much for your investment. We do appreciate it.
We'll see you soon.
We look forward to it.
Have a good evening.
Thank you as well. Okay, moving on down to resolutions. We are to consider a resolution ratifying the investments of the following city funds. And before us tonight, we have CD and a US Treasury bill purchase. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion support. Any comments or questions? I hear none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, thank you. Good job, Curtis. Number two, consideration of a resolution concurring with Gratchett County's approval of the 311 East Superior Street redevelopment Brownfield Plan.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion support.
Just, this is another tool to use to get this project to a point that, one, it's debatable at $2.9 million project, and then also to sustain it for reasonable rents and things that people can afford in our area. So without the Oprah that we approved in our last meeting, and the Brownfield to help reimburse any costs that they fall under, under Brownfield Act, these projects are really tough to do because the construction costs are just so high. Again, we did prove our, the Oprah on this on our last meeting, and the developers here to answer any questions are Great Gratchett too with the, they represent the Brownfield Authority.
Casey said, "If I don't work tonight, I'm gonna pay you." So back down then. He's like, "The boss is there, I'm here." Jim Wheeler, for those who don't know me, from Great Gratchett. No, the, our, the, just a little background, Great Gratchett operates the Brownfield Authority for the county, so that's why we're representing them, it's on that behalf. But it's a really neat program. Traditionally, always been thought of for polluted sites, but where it's really been used is for cases like Ryan for obsolescence. So it's allowed us to take older buildings that are obsolete for what they were intended and built for many, many years ago, and turn them into places, in these cases mostly living quarters along some commercial ones. In the case of this one, like Eric said, it's just a touch around 3 million bucks, we'd be talking about three downstairs apartments with the commercial space and then six upstairs ones. So it makes a nice fitting from that standpoint. And the Brownfield Plan will be a little over about 663,000 identified costs involved with it. So part of the process it has to do is it has to be approved by the Brownfield Authority, which it has. We need concurrence from the city, we need concurrence also from the DDA because it's in the DDA district, and then from that, it's then approved at the county. And then from there, it goes to the state because they're allowed to capture school taxes and the state reimburses the school for them. So that's the pecking order of approval that we have. But these have turned into really great programs for redevelopment. It allows you basically then to, you know, be able to take an older building versus going outside of town or somewhere else and building on a greenfield site and not taking advantage of some of our traditional buildings and helping out from that standpoint, so. And Ryan Smith, who's been our local champion for a lot of these, is here too if you have any questions about it. We were just talking about costs going up, and that's the one thing that we have to deal with about it, but this helps insulate some of that. He still has to pay everything and bring in that, and this is a reimbursement is how you get it. So as you pay your property taxes, you get a portion of it reimbursed until this runs out. And it's tie-bared with the Oprah that Eric described. So the Oprah kicks in first, freezes the tax level, so you're really just collecting the state tax back at first, and then as that releases, then the local is collecting. And once it's covered, then at that point, goes on the rolls as a normal building.
Okay, who has the first question? If we are familiar with the process and we can help a facility and everything else and the developer and their Gratchett, so thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, no further questions? We have a motion on the table, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Good to go. Thank you, appreciate it. Appreciate your investment, Ryan, once again. Okay, next, consideration of a resolution conditioning the establishment of any compensation office, an officer or employee of the Alma Housing Commission upon the approval of the Alma City Commission. Move to approve.
Support.
We're some support. Any background?
Yeah, sure. This is a part of the discussions that are going on with the Housing Commission. We do have a meeting set up between our commission and the Housing Commission coming up next Tuesday, the 29th, at the Housing Commission office on Warwick Drive at 6:00 PM. This is part of the ongoing separation discussions. Underneath the statute, it does allow for the City Commission to approve compensation of staff at the Housing Commission. So we're passing this as part of the process, and we'll discuss more next Tuesday, the 29th.
Okay, any questions?
Move to table. I see no sense in approving a resolution that we have a meeting planned in a week to discuss. I don't have a clear vision of this. I have looked over some things and it gets muddier and muddier. It seems their attorneys and our attorneys are looking at the same law and coming up with two different answers on it. So I think we ought to just table voting on it until we know what we're talking about.
I agree.
We have two motions on the floor. So protocol is to move, I guess I'm not a...
I believe that would be a motion to amend, to table.
So his motion to table was really a motion to amend...
An amendment of the original.
Of the original motion. So first, we vote on the amendment to the motion, is that correct?
Well, if that person wants to...
I don't think so. I think it's just that we can table any motion once it's made.
But you, you'd have to say it first before the, the motion.
Before the motion to approve it, there's a motion, there was already a motion on the table to approve this amendment for this resolution.
Okay.
So once that's on the table, you can amend, as to amend his resolution, because...
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think I can just move to table that vote. I think.
Can we just leave the other motion floating? I mean, that's, we don't want it floating.
Well, you table the item, but I don't know if you want a pending vote. We do have a pending vote. I guess I don't know the rules for exactly that one. We encounter this very often, so.
There's always a new one. I mean, I, Drew, you made the motion, right? I mean, do we withdraw it?
That's a possibility if whoever made the motion is interested in withdrawing either motion, or I guess I'm not sure.
Well, I just, I don't want to vote on it tonight.
You could possibly go and do some research and come back with a more definitive answer on how exactly we're supposed to handle this, because quite honestly, I don't, I think I can withdraw the motion, so.
And I will withdraw my second to, or the, if not necessary, if you withdraw the motion. At first, I think to withdraw, I don't know. Whatever he needs, or make it legal.
So you're withdrawing your motion?
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
So then I have a motion on the floor to table.
To your motion, is to table this discussion?
Yes.
And I second it.
And you second it? Okay, is there any further discussion?
Okay.
Okay. We're as clear as mud here. All those in favor of tabling this for later, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed, say no? And I would say no. Okay, thank you. Moving down to agreements. Consideration of a resolution to approve renewal of the City of Alma's uniform video service local franchise agreement with charter communications and to continue the current 5% franchise fee collected and paid to the City of Alma, authorized to the City manager to sign the agreement.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to support.
This agreement comes up every five years, it's our fifth year. As part of the cable franchise, we can ask for up to 5%. They collect that for us and submit that to the city. That goes into our general fund to pay for general fund items. Currently, we're receiving about $78,000 annually that goes into the general fund to pay for general fund items, so. Yep, we just have to approve it and sign it and send it back to them.
Okay, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Next, reports of, excuse me, officers, boards and committees. Commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. Before us tonight, we have the Alma Police Department's September 2024 report, the September 2024 building permits report, the Planning Commission's October 7, 2024 draft meeting minutes, and the City Manager's report. Your pleasure.
Move to receive 123. Support.
A motion support, comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried.
Move to receive four.
Do we get support? We have a motion to support, Eric.
Yes. Yes. Housing needs assessment. The Michigan statewide housing plan, as part of that plan, they are looking to do statewide housing needs assessments. And in our region, which is known as Region G, the East Michigan Council of Governments has agreed to lead that initiative, and our county is part of that, eighth county region. As part of that housing needs assessment, I did include what the consultant firm would be doing for those needs assessments, so that you had that information. And what they have offered to municipalities within, the communities within those counties, is if you would like one done locally for your community and housing needs assessment, they would do that for a total of $3,000. Now, I've looked at doing this in the past, and it was much, you know, we were talking about $10,000, $12,000 for a local housing needs assessment on a scale of what we were looking at here. $3,000 is within my, you know, purview to, you know, say, "Yep, let's go ahead and do it." But I wanted to bring it here to you to get your opinion on that before I would sign anything to send back to them, say, "Yes, we'd like to have a housing needs assessment done for the City of Alma." What they would be asking from us right now would be a confirmation letter we had on our way ahead stating that we'd like to go forward with that and that we would pay the fee of $3,000. And they would be an estimate April, May timeframe when they would need us to, we would need to pay that, that fee. So just wanted to see what your thoughts were on that and if you had any other feedback.
Any indication on when that would be done, Eric? How far off it is?
I would say a good year. Yeah, I would say a good year.
Sounds reasonable for...
Oh, I think so.
Definitely the information could be valuable, so.
We haven't done any sort of housing assessment since probably 2004, when we did the Riverfront master planning, so definitely a reasonable number. And we do have the money and you can develop, and we could move some things around to pay for it, so we wouldn't be coming out of any further general fund dollars, or I'm sorry, fund balance dollars. Okay. Just wanted to also give you a path to rail line update. Groundwork and Wexford Transit have made their selection of the consultant that will do the Phase 2 study. The consultant is WSP. They will be getting studied here fairly soon. They expect the time to complete that is by the end of 2025. We have discussed previously, because that was what they told us in the meetings, and that is what they are going to be looking at, which is ridership and market demand, the track conditions along the route, proposed route and service options, the economic and financial analysis, management and governance structure, once everything's up and running, how it will be overseen and maintained, and community engagement. That will probably be the first thing that we see of them going along the line and working for the different communities. We do have a seat on the advisory committee as this is going through for Phase 2. Our next meeting is a week and a half out, so we'll keep everyone informed of that, but it is moving on to the next stage here, and the big deal was to get that consultant on board, so. You ready to come?
Great, great.
We discussed the last meeting, and we're going to be underway with Moyer Avenue for the Neighborhood Street project. That is well underway. We're expecting sometime this week to be done with the water main replacements. I'm sorry, sewer replacements this week, water main replacements next week, and have the road ready and graded for the winter. We won't be able to put down any asphalt this year like we discussed, but November sometime, Consumers Energy will be in to put the new sewer, I'm sorry, gas line in. So it's another good reason not to put down the asphalt quite yet either. This has been a topic a couple, a couple times here, the Gobble Water Plant, the two elevated tanks that sit on site there that have the, lack of better, it's like moths or mold growing on the outside of that. We have opt for bid to clean those two tanks, and we hope to have those back in before our next Gobble meeting for their review and approval, and bring that back to the commission here to let you know what's decided there, so hopefully that will get bid done then. Water meter replacements?
Easy to do.
Yeah, easy to, we've been saying. We're in full swing of that. The 1,524 letters have gone out. We now have 888 citizens that have scheduled their water meter replacements as of last Friday, which is good news, and I'm sure others have seen it since then. And they are out, the crews are out doing replacements as we speak, so that's moving along. Recreational program statistics, it's the end of this year for reporting to the, for the Community Center grant, and just let the commission know and the community know that during the six months that we've been able to put this program together, a total of 11,443 community members participated in recreational events held at either our parks or Alma Public Library. 5,431 of them were categorized as youth or young adults, while 6,012 were categorized as adults or seniors. And believe it or not, this was probably the most shocking number for me. In addition to our own staff, we had almost 200 hours served by volunteers to make those events happen, so thanks to all the volunteers for coming out and helping make that work. So we see some new programs coming along for the spring, hopefully some outdoor league events and things that Morgan is working on, so more to come in the future with that. And then lastly, upcoming community events. We just wanted to make the commission aware that there's a lot happening here very soon. This Thursday is the Alma Fall Festival, a private group of Braveheart and Fires, Fire, oh gosh, I'm blanking.
Fire Island.
Fire Island. Since they fire keepers, that's a casino. Fire Island, Making Spirits Bright. Both of those organizations or facilities last year gave out Christmas trees, so this year they're working together to give out Christmas trees, and they're working with Frontier Communications in their parking lot to give those trees out and actually hold some extra things for families and the kids. Come home now for the holidays, it's just around the corner, Friday, December 13th. Next morning is the fundraiser we use to raise money for the Christmas decorations, activities and other projects in the community. The Dino Bowl Run, Kids' Ringer Trot, and not new this year, but this year they're breaking out the home tour. So they're trying to do it Friday evening, which just kind of puts people not being able to come down and enjoy the activities happening downtown. They're going to try it on Sunday from 3:00 to 6:00, and the proceeds that they, that they raise during that home, that home tour, they're going to donate to the Wright House Restoration Project, so just wanted to share those and get those in front of everybody because it's all going to happen very quickly. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on the City Manager's Report?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor received, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion is carried, thank you, receive it. Stuff would be appropriations. Paying those. We have a motion to support, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion is carried. Thank you. Commissioner comments? Maxanne?
Nothing tonight.
Roger.
Halloween coming up, real quick. Be careful, little kitties, with looks like fair weather continues through Halloween, we hope, and first in November, going down the tube. Looks good. The First Presbyterian Church is holding their Halloween party. Be a little bit different this year, as we will not be able to go indoors with it, but it doesn't look like that'll be real necessary with the weather. It's on a Thursday this year, which conflicts with community cafe and also a wedding in Fellowship Hall on the Saturday, I believe. So we're going to try to hold it outside. We will have police and fire and big toys from the city there with it, and, well, we're kind of playing it by ear to see exactly what we're going to be able to do because it will be outside. We are partnering with Walmart, who is going to provide some refreshments and some extra help for us, and looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Laura?
Uh, thank you. Congratulations to all involved in Gratchett County Player's Last Play, Ripcord, it was a great success. Everybody did well, and now, starting today, all new curtains, legs, teasers on our stage are going in, starting today. So looking forward to the next show showing off our brand new stage.
Good show. Drew?
Yeah, just also a congrats on Ripcord. That was a fun show. Sarah?
No, thank you.
Eric?
Just wanted to share with everyone, I've already shared with the commission, but to the community, that we were successful in receiving the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant that we applied for way back in June. $168,000 plus our match, we'll get the connection on Charles Avenue, where it ends currently next to Alma Product, or Alma Container, to the Fred Meyer Trail. So we received notification on that, and we'll be able to get that accomplished next spring when we do Charles Avenue, so it's good news.
Great. Okay, and I would just like to add my appreciation to everything that's going on, and certainly to Great Gratchett, all the work you guys do to bring forth the two projects we talked tonight and all the other ones, you know, Avalon Tahoe, and Jim and I have been continuously investing, and we really appreciate that in town. Nice to see something happening in that old Van Adams building, you know, bringing it back to life. It's got to be over 100 years old, and this will position it in a place that's going to be useful for the next 100 years, so it's good to see that in downtown. With that, we'd open up the floor to the members of the public. If anybody would like to address their commission, please fill out the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to share your thoughts. Please do.
Good evening. I'm Tim Odeker. I live at 1338 Etoma Drive in Mount Pleasant. I'm running for the Michigan House of Representatives for the 92nd District. So the 92nd District is all of Isabella County, and then five townships in Gratchett County, Seville, Pine, Bethany, Emerson, and Arcata, and includes the city of St. Louis, city of Alma, and within the city limits of Ithaca is the new 92nd. So I'm running to be elected to this Michigan House of Representatives. I grew up in Mount Pleasant, I went through Mount Pleasant Public Schools, I graduated from Central Michigan University. I've been a member of that community for a very long time. I've been on the school board for 16 years, most of those years as board president. I've also been a member of the Chippewa Water Shred Conservancy for 21 years on their board. Currently, I'm on the board of governance, of their governing board there also. I have a law degree. I studied intellectual property law and the East Coast. My actual academic background is sciences. I have a biology and chemistry degree. I currently work at Central Michigan University in the College of Education and Human Services. I am the Associate Director of University Relations in the Charter Schools Office. My function is to draw pre-kindergarten, really zero, through high school, closer together to post-secondary opportunities, whether that's college, community college, CTE, any of those things. So I work on creating bridges and relationships with kids across the state. Central Michigan University has 75 different schools and about 27,000 kids all across the state, and so I work at finding ways to connect with them and showing them the opportunities for moving forward and moving ahead. I would like to take the skills that I've learned, primarily being on the school board for 16 years, of listening to everyone in the community, getting facts, making decisions, making hard decisions, but also changing those decisions if we learn that there are better ways of doing it. I've been connected and done a lot of things in our area that I feel have been very beneficial, but those skills themselves of being able to listen to everyone in the community, ask questions, and take that skill to the state legislature to help things move forward together and faster. I think the state legislature has been stalled, and there's been other things going on that we need to get back to doing the work that the state needs. Some of those things that I've been looking into are clean water. A lot of this area also has some issues with clean water, riverdale in the sewer systems and the problems with the Pine River. Isabella County has the exact same issues going on with the northern part of the Chippewa River and Coldwater Lake. There's a lot of stuff that the state needs to be better involved in with converting some of those communities into sewer systems as compared to septic systems. So I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done in that space. I'm also very interested in relooking at the way that we have done our taxes. So in 1994, the state changed how we gather taxes and how we distribute those taxes. I think we need to look at how those taxes get redistributed, primarily to our communities and our municipalities. I think it's been left out of that equation. I think a lot of the promise there has not come to fruition, so after 30 years, I think it's time to look at that and how that works. Prime example in Isabella County, I'm sure you've heard, is our big question of whether we'll have a sheriff's department after November or not. But there are many other things that happen with municipalities and not getting the funds that I think they need to be getting from the state in that process, but more importantly But more importantly, because they know what's going on, you know what's going on in your communities, and you need to be able to get the resources to be able to get those done. Besides that, public education. I have a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge in that space. There are some things that need to be cleaned up in that area as it is funding wise, stability in funding. But also, there's a lot of arcane laws that have been in existence since the early 30s and 40s that need to be readdressed and realigned to what's going on in our world today. So those are some of the three areas that I'm very interested in, have a lot of experience in, and I would like to impact. And again, I'm Tim Odiker and I'm running for the Michigan House of Representatives. And as you know, voting is starting, it started, and it's getting in full swing. And so I'd like to encourage everyone to vote, which I'm pretty sure everyone here has that passion as it is already.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Certainly, feel free.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. You have up to five minutes to share your thoughts.
Craig Zeke addresses 201 South Franklin in St. Louis. As President of the Alma Housing Commission, I just look forward to our work group meeting next Tuesday at 6 o'clock at Heather Court. And I think it's just going to be a real valuable meeting for us just to be able to sit down and share information. I think we're going to be able to glean information from both sides and glad to see that that's happening. So just one of the, thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
Great. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to address the commission tonight? Dan, are you there?
The only thing I've done is.
You can talk, you can talk.
Okay. I also brought literature.
Maybe get your steps in.
Actually, I just wanted to pass out literature to you. I'm not sure. I'm in District 2. I think Roseanne, you're in my district, but I'll be glad to give her 311. And I'm on the board. This will be my 13th time to run. I've been on there 24 years, longest running commissioner. And these are just some of the things that I've been involved in in the last 24 years. Oh, I'm sorry, here. Okay, is anybody out here in my district?
What precinct is that on?
Uh, yes, District 2.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Jim.
Anybody else like to address the commission tonight? Anyone else? Okay, with that, we can entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
Move to adjourn.
Good motion. Did I hear support as well? Motion to support. Nice chance to come up with questions. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.